Welcome, everyone. I'm Lindsay Coats. I am the president of Roswell Next. And I'm really excited to see so many faces here tonight. Lots of new faces. And I really appreciate everybody coming out. I wanted to give a short story of how I got involved with Roswell Next. And it was several years ago. And I have a particular interest as a Realtor to know what's going on in the community. But also, it's a personal interest of mine to get to know what's happening in my community with my tax dollars and with, you know, parks, rec, everything that's going to be related to raising my family here. I lived here for a short time. And so it was important when we were deciding where to raise our family. Roswell, it just hit all the marks for us. So then I found Roswell Next. And I remember one of the first meetings I went to was actually a debate that they put on with another group at the time. But it was a debate for the council at the Cultural Arts Center. And I liked what the organization was doing, like what they represented. They weren't pushing an agenda. They weren't pushing any specific candidate. They weren't pushing anyone in particular. Just as an organization, they were trying to put the word out there about what was happening in this city. And I truly valued and appreciated that. We are a nonpartisan group. And as an organization, we do not endorse candidates or a position on what is happening. We are here to bring you the topics and speakers that engaged citizens want to hear about. And we like to have a little fun while doing it. So hence our evening more relaxed events with, you know, if you want to partake in a little alcohol, too. And we get our social side in. That's right. And with that said, we are a member-based organization. And so my pitch to you is for $50 a year, you get about 20 events a year, morning and evening, suit whatever kind of person you are. And at each event, you get breakfast, you might get a drink, like tonight with Oak Street Bottle Shop. If you're a member, you get free drinks. So it pays for itself. We like to say we're the best deal in town to stay involved and stay in the know about what's happening in Roswell. And like I said, we like to have a great time. So really, there's no reason anybody in this room shouldn't be involved. Okay. So with that said, my pitch is out of the way. I'm going to throw it over to my lovely vice president, Amy Gates Stroud. And she's going to go through the rest of the details.
I'm all flustered from the mic issue. So I'm Amy Gates Stroud, I'm the vice president of Roswell Next. And yes, we're $50 like right now, but you know, we haven't had a rate increase in like 10 years and with inflation. As the membership chair person, I don't know, I'll get back to you. But it really is a good deal. And we really, really enjoy bringing everybody out for these kinds of things. If you were, some of you might have been with us yesterday morning. We don't usually do events back to back. So we were 7:00 AM yesterday. We were setting up a variant for our meeting. The city staff, the mayor, and several of the city council members came to talk about the bond, which was really well-attended, the three bond questions. So we really try to bring you content that's information we think you need to know as citizens. So we're super excited to have folks here, thanks to the folks that came out yesterday as well. So I think I'm supposed to give you a couple of different pieces of information. Okay. First of all, if you are new to a Roswell Next event, my spiel is this. We are nothing but polite and respectful of the folks that are in this room, whether they are the candidates, the presenters, or each other. We like to say that we're, you know, we're a membership-based, it's a private organization. We can get rid of people, we can kick people out, we can do whatever we would like. We've never had to do that, but I give the spiel anyway. Because we ask people to come speak at our organization. And we never want people who come to speak at our organization at my request or our request to be treated poorly. So that's an expectation that we set, and we expect everybody to live up to that. That was the first thing, hostkeeping thing to get out of the way. The second is the format.
Yes.
No, I can do it. I think I can do it. I can do it from memory. They'll correct me if I'm wrong. So this is how this is going to work tonight. We have a set of questions, both tough issue-based questions. And then like a bunch of goofy ones, just to lighten the mood here and there as we get too serious. Those are mine. So we're going to have a little combination of questions. Candidates will each have an opportunity to introduce themselves. They will have three minutes to introduce themselves. I have a timekeeper over here, wonderful board member, Bob Clarkson. He's going to like raise his hand when you have like 15 seconds left. Okay? Is that good? Does that give you enough time? Okay. So he's going to raise his hand when he's got, they have 15 seconds left. And then, I don't know what we do. Just be done.
Just finish.
Just finish.
Let's get some run.
Yeah, exactly. You guys were great yesterday. So, and then we'll finish. And then the questions, you will have two minutes each to answer. Everybody will get an opportunity to answer questions. We are not formal enough to do rebuttals because we would just end up down a rabbit hole and it would not be good. So everybody gets to answer, then you get the next question. We're going to start in reverse alphabetical order, I think, for introductions or questions, both. And then we're just going to mix it up. So there's a different person going first each time. We're trying to make this as fair as possible. So trying to remember all my rules here. What else we got? Is that it?
That's it.
That's it? Everybody good? Questions? Questions? Anybody? Questions? Audience? We're very participatory. So be afraid to just yell if something doesn't make sense. All right. So we're going to start at this end with introductions.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Mulham Shabib. I've lived in Roswell for 10 years now. I want to start off by thanking everyone for being here. It's Thursday night. I know a lot of folks may have a lot of things taking place outside of here. So thank you for being here. Thank you for the organizers. And thank you for all three of us, in addition to me, being here. There's a lot of nastiness sometimes in politics. I can genuinely say this from the bottom of my heart, that every single person that I've met here going through this process is full of character, is full of compassion, is full of integrity. So thank you just for this opportunity to meet everyone. My background, my wife and I have lived in Roswell for 10 years. I'm a CFO of a chicken company. We're the 15th or 16th largest chicken company in America. We employ over 1,000 people in Gainesville, Georgia. I've been really fortunate to be part of that company. We've had a lot of growth over the past few years. I'm part of our leadership team. And one of the things that, one of the main reasons why I chose to run is for my kids. So in my home, I've shared this with some people, but in my home, my wife and I have four daughters, and my dad lives with us as well. He's about 85, 86 years old or so. And so I feel in my home, I have a good representation of the city of Roswell in my home. So I hear it from my daughters, I hear it from my wife, I hear it from my dad. The things that matter to them about Roswell, I'm hearing it in my home. So the reason that I'm running, just having a father of four girls, I'm trying to be part of the decision-making process. As the girls get older, they say, you know, Dad, this is a great city. We don't want to leave. You know, life may take them somewhere, marriages, work, education, whatever the case may be. But I don't want them to leave Roswell because they didn't like Roswell. So that's what's driving this. I've got a lot of passion for the city. I've tried to be really involved in the 10 years that I've lived here. For about five years or so, I've coached my daughters in softball, I've coached them in basketball through Roswell Park and Recs. I've sat on two school boards, Amana Academy and Atlanta Academy. And about two years ago, I was appointed by Governor Brian Kemp to the Georgia Department of Economic Development. I'd love to use what I've learned from just professional work, from the Georgia Department of Economic Development, from being a father, from being a CFO of a fairly large company, and use that and apply it to benefit the city of Roswell. There's no glory in city council. You don't do this for the money. This isn't, you know, you're not running for the White House, this isn't the Senate, House of Representatives. This is city council. I mean, you do it because you genuinely care. A lot of folks go into politics, they become rich. That does not happen here in city council. So we're doing it for the right reasons, and thank you for the opportunity to introduce myself.
Hey there. Sorry. I'm Alan Sales, and I, my wife and I have lived in Roswell for 27 years. We raised our children here at four different addresses on both the east and west side. You know, I am compelled, pleased, and honored to run for city council. I'm compelled to run because I believe Roswell needs economic development, not urbanization. We're out of balance in our tax digest, and that's one of the chief reasons that I felt compelled to run, is to work on that issue. I'm pleased to run because I think that local government is where it's at. This is so great to be able, you know, everybody here can, this is the accountable, accessible, and approachable level of government. It should be the most accountable, accessible, and approachable level of government in our American system. And we can all reach out to each other. So I just have enjoyed this whole process. And I'm honored to run because I am running to fill the term of my horseshoe-bend neighbor, Marcella Zapata, and have gotten to know his precious family through this process. Just as a bit of background for you as Roswell residents, the things that matter out of my resume to you, I began my career at KPMG, which is an international accounting and consulting firm. I was in my portfolio of companies that I was responsible for, businesses that I was responsible for included housing authorities, including Atlanta Housing Authority, boards of education, governmental entities, as well as healthcare systems. After that, I went to Turner Broadcasting, and I was at Turner from when it was a billion dollars till when it was $28 billion a year, or $28 billion in revenue. And my responsibilities were acquisitions and business development. And so think about large process or large transactions, large projects such as the Thrashers or CNSI, those are the things that I was responsible for. And I really began to learn how to negotiate large projects. The third phase of my career, after Turner Broadcasting, I was fortunate enough to be able to join a private equity firm. And for the last 18 or so years, I have been in the business of starting businesses, being an entrepreneur, and negotiating in situations where we needed to close, both sides needed to close. So how do we create win-win? So I'm running because I want to see Roswell's tax digest get in balance for us as Roswell residents.
All right. Good evening, everyone. Thank you to Roswell Next. Thank you to Roswell Moms Network for hosting the event. My name's Jason Miller, and I'm president and CEO of a business based here in Roswell for the last decade. We're a technology and data company specializing in networking and IT, and we also have an effect with retail automotive dealerships. My background for this was as a, I was a controller for many years with several large automotive retail groups. And my day-to-day involved trying to provide information to people and improve communication within the store. So I created a company at that time. I found an unmet need for reporting and analytics that I could keep people out of my office. That was the real reason. It started off as a hobby, and then we grew into a company now that services over 800 automotive retail stores based in Roswell for the last decade. I found Roswell by accident. We were shopping around in several areas, and Roswell just felt good. It felt like home. And we moved here, moved the business here. It was, at that time, it was 70 clients, two employees. Now we're up to 27 and 800 rooftops. So I'm the epitome of an entrepreneur and a small business owner, and I understand what drives that. So a little bit, my background, I graduated with a degree in accounting with a minor in real estate. And I applied that, of course, to my current position as president and CEO of the company. And I get asked often, why am I running? And that's a very, very important question. Even as a kid, I was always interested in politics and not understanding how people couldn't come to amicable decisions that are best for everyone. And that is one of those things, strategizing and creating plans and actually executing those plans that I'm very good at. I built my career negotiating with large automotive retail dealerships. And these are guys that are, you go into a dealership, everybody in here's bought a car, and you know how difficult it is to negotiate with them. So negotiating contracts with these fellows is not so easy, but I've become very good at that. And I think I can apply that logic and that mindset to our city council. I look around us and I see opportunity everywhere, from redevelopment to growing entrepreneurial businesses to creating additional maker spaces. We have a maker space on the east side of town. I would love to open another maker space in our area which specializes in technology. I'm very good at technology. I think we need to teach our kids how to code, how to build hardware, how to build data centers. And I think that's very, very important that we reach out to them and keep that going here in Roswell. Secondly, there's a lot of development that I'd like to see within our city. I think everyone does. We all know that we have some blighted areas that need some work, and I think we can bring some spaces to that. So I respectfully ask for your vote. It's coming up soon. Early voting starts in October, or I'm sorry, October 17th, which is right next Monday. And then that runs through November 4th. So I appreciate the opportunity to be here tonight. Thank you so much.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Sarah Beeson, obviously candidate for Roswell City Council, like the other gentlemen up here with me this evening. I'm also a three-year member of Roswell Next, and I appreciate everything the organization does, including hosting events just like this. It's one thing to be engaged in your community, it's another thing to be civically engaged in your community. I'm also a very active member of Roswell Moms Network, which to me is, that's my tribe. That's where I go to get everything from recommendations for pediatricians and pre-cases all the way through, you know, I can't get the stain out of my child's shirt. It's an incredible resource. So if you are a mom, check out the Facebook group, Roswell Moms Network. And props to them because last year this time, they actually put together a candidate questionnaire. So it's great to see an in-person forum so you can hear from candidates directly in their own voice. I have been living in Roswell the majority of my life. Moved here originally when I was nine years old, went to Mountain Park Elementary, and my parents still live in my childhood home in Brookfield. And now I'm proud to raise my children here today. I have two young boys that are almost three and five years old. I have a kindergartner at Sweet Apple. And Roswell's an incredible city. My kids are now getting to have the same opportunities that I was afforded, not only attending incredible schools, but also being able to play or participate in our Parks and Rec program. I will say right now, right off the bat, no one in my family, well, my immediate family is particularly athletic, but we go because we can build friendships and get to know our community. And that's something that I want to be able to continue to support and foster, because Roswell has an incredible sense of community. We're diverse, we're inclusive, and we're growing. And I like to be able to continue to foster that so that my kids can grow up in that kind of environment. I currently run a business alongside my family. It's been here in Roswell for nearly 25 years. We specialize in environmental engineering, geotechnical engineering consulting. Some of our major projects are at Hartsfield-Jackson International Airport, City of Atlanta, Atlanta Housing. And several years ago, we got the opportunity to work for Fulton County redoing the Atlanta-Fulton Public Libraries, including the library right here in Roswell, which I'm incredibly proud of. So I have a lot of experience working on large-scale infrastructure project, projects, everything from soup to nuts with budgeting, operations, and seeing those through. I currently am part-time pursuing my doctorate at the University of Georgia. I've previously graduated from University of Georgia with my MBA, and I have a Master's of Science in Environmental Management from the University of Maryland. And some of those are reasons why I also wanted to run, because I believe it's bringing that diversity of thought to Roswell City Council, to be able to provide balance, be able to have somebody who understands environmental management, environmental policy, be able to know the long-term impacts and the implications of smart city planning, and to be able to create a resilient city. And I mean that not only environmentally resilient, but economically resilient. And that's something that I would like to work towards. Ben, if you watch Roswell City Council meetings online or in person, I am a frequent commenter, and I have participated in the past and spoken out on things related to transparency as well as inclusivity. Those are two key factors that are important to me and something that I would like to contribute to if elected. If you like what you hear this evening, you can check me out at votbeeson.com. And as was mentioned, early voting starts on Monday, Election Day is on November 8th. And I would appreciate your vote for Sarah Beeson. Thank you.
Thanks, everyone. How'd they do with the time?
They did great.
They did?
Did get in trouble.
I figured he was awfully quiet back there. So I think we decided we're going to start with an easy kind of warm-up question first. You don't get two minutes for these. They're really, they're like easy, quick, one word, not, so don't, yeah, don't, we're not giving you two minutes for these. It's like a quick answer. So first one is, when family or friends from out of this area come to visit you here in Roswell, and as somebody with a big family, I often have visitors from out of town, where do you take them? What do you show them when you come, when they come?
Absolutely. We go hiking, actually, in downtown Roswell. We've been going there for years now, the waterfall, the hiking, the outdoor activities. So that's definitely where we go. That and Canton Street.
If at all possible, I show them our grandbaby.
That doesn't count.
So, you know, we like to go from the earth. That's a local place for us, and it's right down the road. We love to take people there. It's a lot of fun.
Great question. Lots of great places to go here in Roswell. Start off on Canton Street, work our way through our amazing park system, because I tell you, we have bar none the best park system in the state of Georgia, most likely in the southeast. And when I get to show people that, it makes them fall in love with our city, too. So my goal is to get them here and live in closer.
I like the riverfront. Roswell actually has the most amount of riverfront space compared to any other metro Atlanta city, and it's gorgeous. So being able to partake in the riverfront for the natural beauty, I am not a hiker, in case you cannot tell, but you can stroll along the boardwalk there. Also love from the earth, especially when they do their concert nights, and then being able to stroll down Canton Street and be able to go to, one of my favorites is Table in May, and they have a beautiful patio. I'm a sucker, that's my version of being outdoorsy is a good patio.
Being outdoorsy is not a requirement. Do you want me to do, am I doing the first one? You want to do the first one? Oh, I got the mic. Lindsay's like, stop talking. Okay. So this is timely since we had the bond question, bond event yesterday. So there's a proposed $180 million-plus bond referendum on the ballot, three of them separated into parks and rec, public safety, and police and fire improvements, and the parking deck. So it's kind of a two-part question. One is, what factors do you think that voters should consider when determining whether to vote for or against those bonds? The questions, okay? So what do you think they should consider? What should be consideration when they go in to vote yea or nay on those? And then if you're willing, will you share with us how you'll be voting on them?
You know, it has been really something to go to all of the bond referendum meetings, the informative meetings that the city council and mayor have done. I've been to all of them, but I think two. And I have learned an awful lot about what you guys think about these things. The first question was about what's a, what factor should voters consider? You know, we, I hear often in this process that Roswell is slipping behind other cities. And I think we have to consider whether or not we are going to change that and how we're going to change that. Clearly, we have deferred maintenance, as you will hear in those conversations. So I think we have to say, is now the time? Is this the right way to do it? And do we trust the people doing it? That's the question we have to ask. And so I would say, we also need to think about that, are we going to invest in things like the public safety? That we have, as you may know, we have the only, or the largest city in the United States without a full-time fire force. That means that if there's a regional issue or something like that that comes up, our firefighters are going to go to their full-time job. They won't be here to protect us. And so that's a big consideration as we think about the way we run our city. But I think one other thing I'd like to mention, too, is, you know, I've heard many times about this is a tax increase, and it certainly is, but there's a bigger one that's before us, and that's the lost issue. Uh-oh, I think I'm getting, am I getting?
No. He didn't realize he had to keep doing it.
Oh, I'm sorry, okay. Thought I was getting the hook.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
It's fine, the girl's not doing it.
The local option sales tax issue is actually going to be more.
No, you're just taking your time.
Let him go.
The local option sales tax issue, which is going on between us and Fulton County, is actually more per year than the bond increase. And we all should be paying very, very close attention to that, because although we may get something out of the bond, we're going to end up with nothing out of the lost if it goes away, the local option sales tax. And so I think we should all be about the business of calling our Fulton County Commissioners. And if you don't know how to do that, go to my website or send me an email, and I'll make sure you do. But that's even more expensive than the bond issue.
Great job, Tom.
Everybody wouldn't mind, like, they would try to see, they're trying to see you in the back, too. So if you want to stand there.
No.
Camera man, please stop when you.
No.
Tell the back to move forward.
Come closer.
Raise your chair.
Get comfy. We don't fight.
We can't mess with the camera guy.
Okay.
All right. So regarding the bonds, the most important factor for me that I would like us all to consider when it comes to voting yea or nay on the bonds is, we're not really doing it for ourselves, we're doing it for the future, for our kids, for our kids' kids. And some of that comes down to 107.6 million is designated as a bond for the park system. Our parks are in need of repair. I wish we had maintained those along the way a little bit better than we have. Hearing that we have 75 to 100 million in deferred maintenance is a little disturbing that we haven't tackled that sooner. It's a big chunk of change. I know that's a tough, it's a tough nut to crack, so it's interesting. The police 911 center, that bond, if you consider our regional presence and really what we're able to do, I believe that that is a necessity we must have. Our current fire department is moving to a full-time position over the course of a period, or a course of five years. Their current living conditions are not very good. They are partitioned by wood, one bathroom in a lot of the stations that were built in the 70s, so they are in need of update and replacing. I will note that our 911 crew, that whole team, just received the triple ace award from the I E A D, which is, it's pretty prestigious. There's only 21 in the world, and so we're doing a very, very good job as far as 911 and our operations. And being able to house our police and our fire headquarters together so they can coordinate and command situations is pretty much a necessity. I grew up volunteering with the E O C back in my hometown of Mississippi, Cleveland, Mississippi, and as a dispatcher, and it was imperative that we had everybody in one room. The third bond's the parking deck. Parking deck's a tough issue because I think it affects a relatively small portion of our population. However, all of our population will participate in the tax burden of that. I wish we had considered other avenues first, such as a CID on Canton Street, let our business leaders in the Canton area be able to direct how they want their tax dollars spent and be able to direct that in a bit better way. There is parking at City Hall, sometimes that's congested. There is a problem walking, I know from City Hall to Canton Street as far as safety. I do think we could improve that with lighting, for sure. As far as where my position on the bonds, Alan brought it up, we have a lot, we're looking down the barrel of a loaded gun. We actually have our lost exemptions, our lost local option sales tax are a problem that the Fulton County Commissioners are not really, we're in a mood to negotiate. And in fact, they don't even talk to a lot of the city leaders, and that is frustrating. So again, contact Fulton County Commissioners. Position on the parks and bonds, our parks and rec, I believe that is something we need to do to reinvest in ourselves in order to be the award-winning park system that we have. 911 center, I'm all in on that. I believe that's a necessity in order to grow our city and be able to respond to emergencies. The parking deck, I personally, I don't know that that is the right fit for us yet. I think that we need to exhaust other options, and we'll see how that goes.
So not to be redundant, I think they pretty much covered what all is in the bonds at this point in time, but what voters should be considering as they're going to the ballot is this, the best and highest use of your taxpayer dollars, because as was mentioned, it is a tax increase. With the estimation that's been given by the city, it's based off a home value of $450,000. You're looking at about $350 additionally a year. That's roughly 40% of a tax increase. In terms of the projects themselves, I will say first and foremost, I completely understand their necessity. I am 100% in support of the list of projects themselves. The deferred maintenance, again, is something that should have been maintained over time, and we're kind of behind the eight ball on that now. In regards to public safety, it's, when the fire department did a gap analysis, there was a large lack of coverage in East Roswell. It doesn't mean that they're not getting fire services, it means that it's going to take slightly longer to get there. Roswell has since transitioned to a full-time fire department, and so they need extra amenities and coverage in their fire stations that were not provided when these stations were created in the 1970s when we had volunteer fire departments. So again, completely understand the necessity of that. In regards to the parking garage, I realize the underlying desire to want to have a free deck like Alpharetta, but at this point in time, the parking garage as it is proposed is very nebulous. There's not a specific site that they have in mind, they don't have an idea of the design which is actually going to impact the final price, and there's not an idea, even if it's going to be paid or free. So there's a lot of unknowns there to decide if that's going to be the best and highest use of your tax dollars, in my personal opinion. I will preface, I will answer the question as to where I stand on the bonds with, this is left to the voters to decide, you make your own individual opinion, this is only my personal opinion as a resident of the city of Roswell. For me personally, out of the three, the three questions on the bond, I realize the issue of public safety is probably the highest priority at this point in time to make sure that we can provide full coverage for East Roswell, and so that we can make sure that we maintain our fire facilities for our new full-time fire department. However, I don't know that I personally would use bond money for deferred maintenance. That's typically what I like to call like the big sexy projects, that's what you would use a bond for, not usually for maintaining your parks and redoing the turf. Also, keep in mind at this point in time, our inflation is at a record high for the last several decades, interest rates are very much increasing. And I say this as somebody who oversees rates for an engineering firm, construction prices are not getting cheaper. So once we implement those bonds, you're already in a race against time to be able to build those on that budget. So I don't think that it would be fiscally responsible to implement those at this point in time. That's me personally.
Thank you, I'll do one at a time. Park and recs, it's about 107 million, as you all know. We have over 25, about 25 parks or so in the city of Roswell, over 900 acres of land. So to me, investing in your parks is a great thing to do. You're investing in your parks, you're investing in the quality of life, you're investing in your environment. So I'm an advocate of the park bond, I've been an advocate from day one. The police and fire, I'm also an advocate for that. I think anytime you have a chance to invest in the safety and the security of your city, it's a good thing to do. The parking garage, the 20 million parking, $20 million parking garage, I'm also in support of that. I think that would have a big benefit, not just for the businesses in the area, but for the city as a whole. I feel it's going to attract more people to the city, it's going to have a positive impact on the sales tax that we collect as a city, which would benefit the whole city. Another thing I'd like to say is, the average homeowner, I think, is going to pay about $350 to $400 extra a year in taxes, potentially. If you look at that, that's a dollar a day. So we're asking the homeowners to invest almost a dollar a day for the quality of life of what they have in Roswell. And another thing I'd like to take a slightly different approach is, this is only being pushed, this bond tax, to the homeowners. So if you own a home, you're paying the taxes. We talk a lot about affordable housing and affordable cost of living in the city of Roswell. Well, to me, one nice thing about this bond is, if you're in an apartment, if you're in a townhome, if you're in a renter, you're getting the benefit of this without having to pay for the taxes. And if you're the homeowner, you know, you're paying for this, but you're appreciating the value of your homes as well. So you look at it, it's a 30-year bond, you're talking $400, $500 a year extra in taxes. Over 30 years, that's about $15,000 in additional taxes. To me, paying, if, you know, if you had the home for 30 years, paying $15,000 in additional taxes for 30 years is worth it. I think it's got a great ROI, return on investment, and I'm definitely 100% in support of all three bonds.
Thank you all so much. All right, I'm going to stand in front of you, unfortunately. Okay. According to the most recent 2020 census data, our community is far more diverse than we would believe. We see ourselves as a traditional family community, yet only 25% of our households have children under the age of 18 living there. More than one-third of our community is comprised of minorities. We are growing older as a Roswell population as well, with the number of residents over 65 increasing from 10% in 2010 to 14% in 2020. And just over 6% of our households live below the poverty level. It often appears that the city council is making decisions based on the input of very small but vocal minority. How will you ensure that you are considering the best interests of the community as a whole when voting?
Very good question, again. This links back to one of my priorities as your next city council member, is to increase our communication. And I think the simplest, most effective way for us to do that is to increase usage of our mobile app. And in fact, that needs to be rewritten to where we can send push notifications to citizens, so that we can let them know important things that affect their lives. We can alert citizens to emergencies, we can talk about the bond referendum, we can, anything we want to talk about, we can improve that with communication. And I think that gets more of an input from more of our residents than what we currently have. A great example of this was in April of 2021, we completed our parking study on Canton Street, and we did a survey. 498 people replied to that survey. We have a voter base of nearly 70,000, but there's a lot of inactive voters. So 498 people on the survey replied to the questions that were asked about parking and safety. And if you consider that, I believe the data shows 85% of the receipts on Canton Street come from outside of our city, which is fantastic, means we're drawing the tax base here. I think that we would have been better off by having something that, like a mobile app that has been reworked, that we can send push notifications for our surveys, so that residents, all residents could reply to. That gets us more of a voice of all the people, not just the select few. I tell you, as I, as I go canvass neighborhoods and I knock on doors and I talk about the bonds, most people don't even know bonds are on the ballot, and that scares me, especially when it comes to us that are going to be paying the taxes for property increase, or property tax increase, that they don't even know what the bonds are when they read them. They think, heck yeah, 107 million for the parks, I don't understand that I'm going to have to have a tax increase, but I like that. So if we could communicate that to them a lot better, I think we would have been better off.
New skill set. I will say, historically, the city has not been the best in terms of outreach. So I mentioned that I'm currently getting my doctorate in city planning, and there are classes that are even specially designed, not only for surveys and for research, but also community outreach. And I'd like to see some more of those best practices implemented. A friend of mine who was commenting at a council meeting with me, she was asked directly, well, how would you suggest, Aaron Deere, so how would we, you suggest we reach out to folks more? And her answer was very simply, go to people. As opposed to expecting the residents to know to go to the Facebook page, assuming they have Facebook and access to internet, going to City Hall just to stumble in on whatever meeting they so happen to be at at the time, because they don't know where to find those meetings, instead going to them. And I will take, this is a moment of personal privilege to thank our current council and our mayor for, as of this Monday night's meeting, approving, moving at least one of our city council meetings to East Roswell, to make sure that we have representation in East Roswell, our council meetings, and taking the meetings to people. I also want to commend them on their current bond roadshow, like lordy, I am exhausted hearing their schedule. They did Councilwoman Hill's, was it four meetings yesterday? Three meetings yesterday, but that's not including, starting at 7:30 and closing out at 7:30, I think in the evening. That, to me, is good communication. And I would like to see that outside of just the bond referendum, other efforts that the city's putting forth as well. I will say, in terms of the surveys they've done in the past, everything from the bond survey that was done over the holidays, the 4th of July holidays, the parking surveys, the comp plan surveys, I've realized that you never have to put in your address when you're doing that. Part of that, there's some accountability to it, in knowing where folks live, but I'd like to see a geographic survey of where we're making sure that we're getting fair representation of people, and so that way we can identify where we're not getting input and be able to target more input and more outreach to those areas. Well, I got to flip it over the front, otherwise I'll take out.
Thank you so much for that question. I'd like to say I'm really proud of the diversity and the demographics that we have in the city of Roswell. And looking at the 2040 comprehensive plan, we actually have two times as many folks that are below the age of 18 in the city of Roswell than we do above the age of 60 or 65, I believe. It's definitely an important issue for me. I was actually the first person in my family born in America, so I understand a lot of these topics that we're talking about. But I think, you know, we can't, it has to come from yourself. So if I'm a citizen in Roswell, I mean, there's so many opportunities to get involved, regardless of what the city does, at the end of the day, it has to come from you. You have to have the passion, you have to have the drive, you have to have the motivation, you got to have just the involvement yourself. I mean, this is a great city. It's an open city, it's a transparent city, it's a city of opportunity. So even if the city did everything they could, at the end of the day, it has to come from you. And that's what I advocate for. I think, again, regardless of what the city does, at the end of the day, it has to come from you. There's opportunities to get involved, I encourage everyone to get involved. And don't look for somebody to get you involved, do it yourself. This is a great city to be in, it's a great city to raise your family, and there's just so much available to do in this city. So take it upon yourself, is my advice to anyone watching this.
You know, I jotted down a couple of thoughts. First of all, about the diversity and the level of those that have different levels of income and different lifestyles, sorry, I didn't look. But you know, we are a diverse city, and what I think as a city council, one of the things we need to focus on is we need to have different levels of housing opportunities, and Roswell does have a good mix of housing. One of the things it's missing, I believe, is the, what I call the missing middle, it's very, very hard to move up in Roswell and to buy houses in, let's say renovation houses and things like that. I think we need to focus on that. So I would be, I would be hesitant, very hesitant to like upzone and things like that, so that we can make sure that there are housing opportunities in Roswell for our children who grow up here to stay here. The other thing is, is that, you know, this, this is supposed to be the accessible, accountable, and approachable level of government. I believe that most everybody here probably has some city council member's cell phone number or email address on your phone. We should take the opportunity to approach our friends and neighbors and talk to them about what we think. And I think the most important thing we can do as a city is to make sure that we have a clear plan and vision of what we want to be as a city, and execute on that. It's very, very difficult to take each one, each opportunity as a one-off, instead of saying, what is best for all of the residents of Roswell in a comprehensive plan about the future of Roswell? How do we drive the economics of Roswell so that people can afford to live here, that there are jobs where people can stay in Roswell? And, you know, we have got to get the balance back up. I talk often about the fact that 25% of our tax bases in commercial and 75% is residential. That is one of the things that makes it very difficult to be affordable. And the other, and so I think we got to focus on driving commercial opportunities so that the jobs are here, so people can stay in Roswell, work in Roswell, and grow their families in Roswell.
Thank you. All right, we're going to do a, do a non-political question now. If, if money were no object, what would your career be? So if you didn't need a paycheck, what would you do? I always say, I'd be like, if I didn't need a paycheck, I'd like, I'd write novels. I'd just sit, I'd sit home and write all day, right? So if money was no object, what would your career be?
Got a timer on this one.
No timers, yeah. Just one career, one.
If I could have one career and money is no object, I would probably be a travel writer. And that's not only money is no object, that's also childcare is no object, because if you've ever traveled with a two-and-a-half-year-old, you would quit that job immediately. But yeah, I'd be a travel writer, I think. I enjoy writing and I love traveling.
Go ahead, you can go. We're not so strict on this.
You know, I tell you, I enjoy the outdoors so much, which is another reason why I live here in Roswell, so, and I think about this a lot. If I didn't have to work for a living, I think I would actually be something along the lines of a landscaper, be outside, making the outdoors pretty, just so I could be outdoors and enjoy our beautiful city.
If money was no object and I could choose my career, I would probably be a philosophy and logic professor or teacher at a high school level. I think we really, I enjoy that, I love being around kids, and I think the art of thinking needs to be taught very clearly. And so I enjoy that, and I enjoy working with young people as they, watching them grow into adults, that's something that I really enjoy.
I'll just say, in college, I was a mascot, and they used to pay us $100 a semester to be a mascot. So if money wasn't an object, and if I still had the talent to do it, I'd love to be a mascot, professional mascot.
Which mascot?
So I went to University, actually, I went to two colleges. I went to University Central Florida, where I was Nitro, and I went to University of South Florida, where I was Rocky the Bull, so.
Thank you for indulging us, we appreciate it. You know, for a lot of us, your, how you sound on the issues is really important, but it, you know, Roswell in a lot of ways is a small town, so we also just appreciate getting to know you all a little bit better, so. All right, fun's over, back to the questions. Okay. So, now I lost track, okay. Okay. So current mayor and council, to their credit, have worked really collaboratively since they've been in office. They make a lot of decisions, a lot of the decisions are unanimous. There's, you know, a lot less fighting, for lack of a better word, but there's, you know, they, they work well together, they're collaborative, they vote unanimously on very many things, so it's nice. So if you were to join, how would you fit into that group? You know, what, what, what would you complement of that? What would you maybe bring it as a different perspective? So kind of how would you sort of, coming in as the sixth of six, how would you kind of get into that sort of system that they've had the last nine months or so?
In terms of how I would fit in with council, to your point, I believe, I could be wrong, I believe all of the votes have been unanimous thus far this year. And that's not necessarily a bad thing, and also I will acknowledge that 98% probably of what they're voting on in terms of policy is pretty benign, right? Like you are approving to go ahead and receive a grant, and you're approving acknowledgement of members of our community, that's, that's great. I do appreciate the lack of infighting that I think holds up our city to be able to move forward. In terms of if I would complement council, I think I would complement council in the sense that I would be bringing a different perspective. I don't think disagreement is inherently vitriolic, I don't think that disagreement is inherently wrong. We have nearly 97,000 residents, and to be able to, to be able to show diversity of thought, as well as diversity of policy, I think that I would bring a different perspective. I think that track record shows from the handful of times, at least this year alone, that I've gone to council meetings and, in five minutes, relayed my opinions on a topic, and I typically try to justify that with facts and data to make sure that the decision is being rooted in, that it's justified. It's not just you're going up there to wax poetic or just speak off of emotions. Since I do have that very research-oriented background and a consulting background, I think that I'd be able to bring that kind of perspective to council. I also don't believe anyone on council has an environmental background, and we, again, have the largest riverfrontage in metropolitan area. We also have a wonderful tree canopy and green space, so being able to speak out on that, as well as being able to speak towards city planning and future planning, I think it would be diversity of thought. So I think compliment in the, the compliment with an E way.
Yes, that's how it's written, with an E, yes.
Oh yeah, are we going back and forth?
Oh no, back, yeah, yeah, yeah. Yeah, sorry.
I'll say, collaboration, respect, integrity is very important. For me personally, every issue I would vote on independently, I would look at every single issue or every single vote that comes to the city council, how do I, how do I feel about it from my gut, my conscience, do I think it's right or wrong for the city, regardless of what the other five or six other votes have done. So for me personally, every vote would be independent. I'm going in there just being myself. I tell people this all the time, I'd rather lose being myself as I go through this process than win being somebody else. So every issue would be independent. There may be times I'm, you know, 100% aligned with them on certain issues, there may be times I'm not aligned with them. So I'm independent in thought, and that's what I've done throughout my life, and that's what I would plan to do as your representative on city council.
You know, the, the hard work of boards is done in the committee meetings and before the board meetings. So it's, it's healthy and good that this city council, which is essentially our board, is not having fistfights in the boardroom. So I think that's excellent. And I would point to, from my own experiences as a board member on many companies, in one particular instance that I'm most proud of, I invested in a company where it had, it was nearly bankrupt, they had lost an awful lot of other people's money, and I put money in to stabilize that company and became chairman of the board. The first thing I did was I put the three top creditors on the board with me and the CEO. And then we began to talk about how we get the money back. So we had a clear plan of where we wanted to go, and in the, and that kept everybody sort of aligned with the same objectives. And over the course of five years, from the time that I invested in that company and became chairman of the board, until we sold it, we never had a single vote that was not unanimous. And it was because we hashed things out in advance, we went through the process of making sure that what we were talking about and what we were doing cued to the goals that we set, which was, hey, let's get, let's, let's recoup this money that these people have lost. And so I, that's the way I think about the city council. It is, it is clear that we all have experiences that we can bring to bear as city council members. My particular experience is in negotiating large contracts and dealing with the legal process of closing deals. And so I think that's a compliment that I have to city council. There are many people on the city council who have some financial experience, for sure. A lot of them are financial planners and those kinds of things. But my experience is really about negotiating large transactions to close, where both sides have to win, and that's my experience. And that's my experience.
I think I bring a unique perspective to most things. I'm an analytical thinker, for sure. And I like to think outside the box, I like to ask questions, and I like to make sure that the decisions that are being made are the right ones for everyone. Kudos to city council and current administration, opening up for open-mic night every month, any month that has a fifth Monday that's open-mic night, where citizens can go talk to council, ask questions, and actually voice their opinion. Fantastic, fantastic thing. One particular thing comes to mind, recent city council meeting, I think ordinance was passed regarding truck drivers and parking their rigs overnight with their trailers. I don't disagree that they don't need to be in parking lots, and I know there's some issues in some areas where that is happening. But I don't know that we considered or any option that is presented to them of where they can put those. Because we have truck drivers that live in our community that need to put those rigs somewhere. So I don't know that, I would like to have asked that question, and I should have. But I don't know that that was actually considered the repercussions of that decision. Do I disagree with that? No, I don't. But I do believe that we could have made a better decision or offered an opportunity for them to park their trucks somewhere so they could go home and visit their family. Other than that, you know, I tell you, it is very much true. It's a unanimous decision with city council. And I think a lot of that goes into a lot of prep and preparation before meetings and discussions and committees that we don't see at the city council meetings themselves. So I think there is a lot of consensus built within that crew, and that's fantastic.
Okay, I think this will be a good follow-up. Yep, got it. I was trying to just stand in front. I'm gonna skip ahead to one that is about, since we're on this topic of commissions and committees. And the city has several citizen-led commissions, the HBC, Breckenparks, Transportation. Do you believe these groups are effective and why? And how do you ensure that commissioners' personal biases do not overshadow their decisions and recommendations on those committees?
We have quite a few commissions and quite a few councils associated with city council. I definitely feel they add value to the city. I feel that we, as folks who are interested in joining these committees and so forth, I mean, we need to be ethical, we need to be transparent, we need to have good intentions while we do this. I do feel, from what I've seen and what I've learned recently, whether economic, transportation, you know, these are folks who are doing this on a volunteer perspective, because they really care and they're really invested in the city. So anytime you have an opportunity to hear input from the citizens, a lot of times who are non-elected, it adds value, it builds consensus, it gives us the opportunity to hear different viewpoints and put together recommendations that we feel collectively, i.e. these committees that add value to the city. At the end of the day, that's what we're trying to do. You want to create quality of life for the residents, you want to create value, and I think these committees do that.
Yeah, I agree. I think the committee process is a great thing. First of all, I'd say it's responsive to you as citizens through the process that is appointed by elected officials. So it is part of the political process. And also, you know, these are concerned citizens, as Mohan says, these are concerned citizens who are giving of their time. I also think that it's very important, this is crucial, that we give staff a clear view of what the citizens want on an issue, okay? So we have to be careful to make sure that staff doesn't overshadow what we as residents want, because they're not hearing clearly. And also, that whole process of the decision-making and the whole exploring the facts of a certain issue, the only way that can be done in any practical sense is through the committee process, where they are breaking out the UDC, or they are breaking out the study that was done, or they are looking at the plan that was submitted and going in detail in that. And you're not going to be able to do that in a board meeting, essentially, in a city council meeting. So that work has to be done. And I think that that's important for us as residents. We should be all about that. We should be attending those, and we should be focused on making sure that people are, that we are hearing what the staff says, yes. But remember, the staff is not necessarily always aligned with your views. They make a recommendation that may be coming from a different place. And so we need the committee process to drive the decision-making in Roswell and feed it to the city council correctly.
Committees are certainly important. There's not many organizations that exist out there without committees, or some decisions made before it's presented to the board or presented to the executive team. We have a lot of committees, I've been to several committee meetings, and those are, I think they're well worth their time. It gives citizens input and other access to people that might be making these decisions for you and for us. So I do think it's certainly a great, great job that we have these committees. I do wish that, department staff, when they come in and make presentations, I do feel like sometimes the committee might get a little harsh with them, asking questions that the staff wasn't really prepared for, because they didn't know the questions were going to be there. And there's nothing wrong with that. But I do, we have to appreciate our staff and the hard work that they do. And we need to make sure that even the committees are commended on their commitment to our city and making us better, from transportation to the historic preservation committee to all of those. They all impact our day-to-day lives. And again, having those committees gives us, as citizens, another way to communicate with council, and then the committees can take that to council.
To reiterate, the committees and commissions absolutely serve an integral position within the city. It's that connection between the people and the leadership within the city, as well as the staff. There are certain things that I would personally change about the way that our commissions and our committees are currently operated, the most important of which, and this is not an indictment on any specific administration, it's happened for decades. But I would make it a rule, and this would be my personal commitment as well, is to never appoint anybody to a commission or a committee who has made a political donation to those who are making the appointment. If you go back and look, any of the recent appointments, all the way back through years, you can actually connect the dots with specifically what the appointee donated to the council candidate or the mayoral candidate, or the council candidate or the mayoral candidate when they were running. To me, that presents a conflict of interest. Additionally, we don't accept, to that same point, we don't accept applications for being on these committees. So instead of having a representation of what folks know, it's about who they know. So instead of being able to justify your position in the historic preservation commission because you previously served in the Roswell Historic Society, or you are a history major in college, any of your qualifications, it's more about who you know. And those limitations serve as well in making sure that we have fair diversity in our representation throughout the city, making sure that we have not only ethnic and racial diversity in our commissions and our committees, but also socioeconomic diversity. Because again, it should be about what the folks know and the opinions they're able to provide versus who they know. And then lastly, I would actually suggest, like, we need another committee. But a hole that I've seen, and this is not my idea, I will go ahead and commend, this idea came from Yolanda Freeman, who previously ran, Scott Long also, and I had a discussion about this. I'd like to see a tenants' committee or commission for those who rent here in Roswell to be able to voice their concerns about their living conditions. I think all of us saw what happened with Roswell Housing Authority, there's also some apartment complexes here in Roswell where I went to knock doors, where they can feel like they can openly discuss with ComDev some of the issues that they may see at their own housing situation. And this is for houses as well, renters. But making sure that they don't have repercussions from it, or feel like they can be an indictment towards them. So that's me personally.
Thank you, all right. We'll do one more serious one before we do a fun one. So the perception, there's a little bit of a perception out there that our neighbors in North Fulton have, those cities have done more from an economic development standpoint to bring in businesses and improve their downtowns. It's not a political statement, it's just the perception, right? So, and the second piece of that is that there is a perception that Roswell is not particularly business-friendly, that it's difficult to do business in Roswell with City Hall and things like that. Again, not my statement, just the perception. So, two-part question. So one, what are the top, you know, one or two areas that you see that you would focus on for redevelopment? And the second part of that question is, how do you make the city more business-friendly?
I think the perception is there because it's true. I mean, the fact is that Roswell's tax base is 25% commercial and 75% residential. And the cost of services for a dollar of commercial taxes is 40 cents on the dollar. And the cost of residential is about a dollar forty to a dollar fifty for a dollar of revenue. So it is a fact that that is out of balance. And the cities that we're talking about, they have pursued a plan, and they have acted in accordance with that plan, and they have a balanced book, which means that the residents, the taxes that they pay are in line, and there's room in the budget for other things. One of the problems Roswell has is that it does not have any room in its budget to spend on itself. So hence, we have to do a bond offering, because we have not been able to do what we should have done, whether by choice or whatever. So I think the top areas of focus are really making Roswell clearly a place to come do business. We have to remember that we invite businesses to Roswell, we cannot make them come. So one of the things I learned in my negotiation experience over many years is the first thing I do is I develop a model of the business from my perspective, from our company's perspective. What is it that we need out of this negotiation? What are the strategic imperatives? How do we rank order the economic imperatives? And we put that in a schedule, right? So I know what I'm negotiating for. The second thing I do is I do the same thing for the opposition. I want to understand how they make their money and how this negotiation affects them. And the reason is because I sat in a council meeting one time and I heard this argument about what seemed to be ultimately a very small point from our perspective, just looking at it, I don't think that they had the list. But they were arguing about a small point that may have cost the business model for the developer or for the tenant that would be in that development. Okay? And that, and as a result, they don't come, okay? And that's the problem. And that's what we have to do. We have to understand how, oh, I've just got the hook. But that's key. We have to understand how these commercial opportunities make their money, and we have to make sure that we are not fighting them at the expense of their business model with small points. Who's next?
I talk about this a lot, and I liken Roswell to a donut. We're the middle of the donut, we're donut hole. Because there's a lot of development going on around us, and that's based on decisions of administrations prior to current administration. They're much more friendly toward business development and economic activity. We have a lot of development to our north, to our south, all around us, and we have to fix that. One of the things, there's one or two areas that I would like to improve is, the first area is going to be the east side of Roswell, especially in the 400 Holken Bridge corridor. There's a lot of unused properties. And I know there's probably plans in place, but I would love to see a convention space, I would love to see a meeting space. I think back, as I host my automotive dealers here for conferences, there's not anywhere to really meet, and there's not a lot of hotels to stay at. Now we have some of those, we have the Home2 Suites and whatever the Marriott is up there on Mansell. And in conjunction with that, to the east side, there's so much development, I would love either, again, the convention center, somewhere we can meet and bring businesses to, to generate more tax revenue for our city. And I think that's done with a meeting space. The second area I would look at redeveloping, we have, I know that's in the plan now, they're working on a master plan for the Alpharetta Highway and Holken Bridge area, and there's a lot of blighted areas there. One of the things that I would love to do as a city is raise the bar, raise the bar. We have a lot of areas that have operating businesses that have, the storefronts need to be, or disrepair, we need to repair that. We have a lot of parking lots that have potholes as deep as your tire. I think if we hold these businesses accountable and make them, encourage them, enforce them to keep their facilities in repair, I think that generates more interest in our city. And I think that will attract more businesses that want to be like them, and they want to move into an area that has a fantastic look. Secondly, economic incentives, that's what brought my company here. I think we need to get back to that, job tax credits, opportunity tax credits, so that's a considerate issue we need to look at.
So highest priority for me at this point is to be able to focus as well on the east Roswell area. East Roswell originally was unincorporated Fulton, so there's some historic issues there in terms of land use, zoning, and how it was incorporated into Unified Development Code. So there's, in terms of policy and how I would change that, I would like to be, and it's in desperate need, of reorganizing our Unified Development Code to be more clear and more concise with what types of developments, we'd like to see where. And I know that goes into some of the master plans that are currently in process. In terms of how we can try to bring east Roswell up, one idea that I've thrown out there, and it really comes down to the businesses as well as the residents that live within east Roswell, is the possibility of doing a community improvement district or CID under Georgia code, up to 2.5% of only commercial, no residential, commercial property taxes will be set aside to be locally controlled under a CID or Community Improvement District, and the businesses are able to weigh in on that. It goes into infrastructure redevelopment, it goes into beautification, it goes into community spaces. So that way, we can try to make east Roswell more competitive when it comes to recruiting those businesses. And I know that we also, to exactly Jason's point, we have a lot of blighted areas in east Roswell right now. Y'all, like, strip malls aren't the move. I don't know if that's an unpopular opinion, but a lot of the places that, key place-making these days are not in strip malls, they're not in these segregated areas exclusively for commercial. It's mixed-use, but it's community-oriented spaces. But in east Roswell, you have the main thoroughfares are Attila Rose, and it's split off into neighborhoods. The way that you're able to build commodity and agglomeration is being able to turn those spaces inward where people can have more context with each other. Historic Roswell is a perfect example of that. The more personal, walkable contacts we can have, the more return on investment we can have. And I'd like to see more of that through Roswell.
I'll just say real quick, Jason mentioned donuts. There's a really good donut shop in Roswell, it's called Sarah Donuts.
Yeah, it's the best, I'm advised.
So I would encourage all of y'all to visit there. Sometimes perception is reality. I mean, that's the world that we live in. And one thing, you know, us not being as pro-business-friendly as we should have been or could have been or need to be, you can make the argument, we had an anchor tenant studio movie grill sitting on over 10 acres of land in east Roswell. That business is no longer here. And y'all may or may not know, but that business went to Alpharetta. You know, a lot of times, businesses close, that happens. But I feel under no circumstances should the city of Roswell be losing businesses to neighboring cities. And a lot of that goes back to, you know, what made that business leave? If you want to start a business in the city of Roswell, and if you go to the city of Roswell website, it's a lot harder to start a business here and to maintain that business than it is in neighboring cities. I just encourage you, go to city of Alpharetta's website, go to city of Roswell's website, and look at the process for starting a business, look at the process for maintaining your license. I mean, I feel I'm somewhat educated CPA and so forth, and I went to the website recently and I found it a struggle. I said, man, I could just imagine, you know, other folks going through this process, it's challenging. There's an opportunity there, we're not a broken city by any means, this is a great city, but just because we're not, just because we're a great city, it doesn't mean there's opportunities, so. And that's just what I wanted to share.
Thank you, guys. All right, we're gonna move on to a question about the 2040 comp plan. And the city adopted this plan, the 2040 Comprehensive Plan, in 2021. And it was after lots of public input, they did lots of rounds, it was pretty neat, actually. I remember going to the one at the Gate City, of course, I found myself at that one. So demonstrate your understanding of the comprehensive planning process, and what single concern do you most want to see addressed in the 2040 comp plan? Is there something as a part of that that you think needs to be addressed most? And Jason, right?
Yes. The 2040 comp plan, as most comprehensive plans, a lot of effort went into that planning. We do a lot of planning in the city, a lot of, not so much execution, but I think we're gonna fix that. One area that I wish would be focused on a little bit more in the comp plan would be our housing and how we can account for that. Because if you go look, we did some studies, actually, going to our apartment communities, and those are at 85% capacity, 90% capacity. So we are almost full in Roswell. So in order to attract new residents, I think we have to work on the UDC in conjunction with the 2040 comp plan just to account for our growth. And again, there's a lot of areas we can improve in. I do like the idea of multi-use, and I think that's written into the 2040 plan in some areas, to be able to provide a space where you can live, work, and play. Imagine if you work from home, like a lot of us do, and you want to go downstairs for lunch, you can just walk right down and get out of your space and not have to drive, so that cuts down on traffic, too. So again, lots of planning goes into these plans, lots of committee input, lots of community input, and I do think we could focus on a little bit better on our housing situation there.
Get ready for me to wonk out, because I love some comprehensive plans. Comprehensive plans are a
Uh, comprehensive plans are a legal requirement for each city in the state of Georgia. They have to be submitted on the decade basis, but they have to be revised throughout that. Um, to Lindsay's point, in 2021, we implemented it. You typically do a revision process three to four years in, based off of how your city has changed. We did it almost the next year. Um, I have spoken at, I think the majority of council meetings I've spoken at this year had to do with changes to the comprehensive plan. Um, and that was limiting our housing choices here in Roswell. Um, to Jason's point, and then even to Alan's point earlier about having that missing middle housing, the restrictions on RM2 and RM3 actually limit how much housing diversity we can have here and that includes key, the missing middle housing. Uh, missing middle is it's not necessarily a single family home and it's not necessarily a garden apartment. It's a smaller scale version of that, uh, duplex, a triplex, a quadplex. Um, and the changes that were made essentially prevent that from being done and anywhere in the city now, except for the historic district, which is the most expensive area in the city of Roswell to live in. So it defeats the purpose of addressing that housing difference, right? Um, in terms of the comprehensive plan itself, um, again, I would like to see, um, more diversity in kind of the appointments for the committees that are in the comprehensive plan, but I will say I wholeheartedly appreciate the amount of work that goes into that and the committee that did serve there. Um, and then when we did our feedback on the comprehensive plan for those amendments, it didn't ask you where you lived. And I would love to know just from my own personal self-identification, where folks lived predominantly that weighed into that comprehensive plan? How much, how many folks from East Roswell got to have input? Uh, how many folks who live in multifamily got to have input? Um, so that's just something I'd like to see moving forward.
Who's next, Nate?
I'm not.
Sure.
Welcome.
So that comprehensive plan, it's actually on the city of Roswell website. I encourage all of y'all to visit. Uh, I went through it, I printed it. It's actually about 250 pages. Uh, there's a lot of interesting data, a lot of interesting facts in there. One of the things that I found, you know, it was educational to me. One of the things that I found very interesting in there that if, was comparing neighboring cities, I believe it was Milton, Johns Creek, Alpharetta, um, Roswell and, and one more, maybe Sandy Springs, but the data that was in there, uh, from an apartment, from a housing perspective, uh, it was very interesting for me to see that you take a city like Milton, you take a city like Johns Creek, we have, uh, percentage wise, a lot more apartments in Roswell, percentage of population than some of our neighboring cities. So just understanding, uh, what was in there, I found very useful. Um, and, uh, again, I encourage everyone to go through there. It was nice to see, you know, the future plans for transportation, the future plans for biking, future plans for housing and so forth, but, uh, one thing I'd like to see more in that plan if possible is just to see, uh, uh, you know, what is the process and where do they envision a lot of these mixed use facilities being?
So I would say this is a little bit of inside baseball, probably for many of us. Um, you know, it'd be interesting to see what the, uh, the, the 2030 plan said and what the 2020 plan. I mean, we have done an awful lot of plans. I want to speak specifically about the studio movie grill and why it's gone. The reason it's gone is because right next door to it, under whatever comp plan they did it under, they're now, that, the, the tar, the super target, the Dick's Sporting Goods, uh, all of the shops in that shopping center are now gone. They're a lost opportunity. And the reason they're lost is because we're now going to put 335 or 350 standalone apartments there, which is completely non-walkable. Okay, you can't walk anywhere from there. So what, the, the reason that the studio movie grill is gone and the reason TJ's is gone is because that landowner recognized that, hey, there may be an opportunity to monetize this sort of derelict shopping center where studio movie grill was the anchor tenant and he didn't renew any of the leases. Okay? That, that's why they're gone. And so I would say that as, as far as the, the comp plan is concerned, you know, uh, we do need to have a plan and we need to pursue it. And a lot of times we've had plans and we haven't followed them, that's for sure. But one thing's for certain, if we're going to upzone residential neighborhoods, we need to be clear about what that means. And I think if you put that to a vote in Roswell, if you put that to a vote to us as citizens, that would lose 90/10. Because what that is, is where we take a, a house that was a single family home and we knock that down and, and a builder or an investor can put four units there. I don't know about you, but I don't want that in the house next to me. And so I would say we need to be very, very careful with this process. Uh-oh, I'm getting the hook.
What, you got 15 seconds?
Oh, well, 15 seconds. And thank you for coming.
Okay, we realized we didn't give anybody a break and so Mohan had to use the restroom. So we're gonna give him a minute. Anybody else? You wanna, yeah, I know, I'm sorry. Poor planning, we got rattled by the, uh, issues with the mics.
Bottle shop still open?
Bottle, oh yeah. Yeah, so a few housekeeping things, we'll do it now instead of doing it after. Um, there is still food left because we always overorder food, so please have pizza.
Peach of a party.
Oh, peach of a party.
They brought food.
Oh, they brought food?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, they, oh, they, oh, they had the desserts. Did they have the desserts? Oh, they were amazing. That's pretty much all I ate, were the desserts. Yeah. Um, so have pizza, take pizza. Somebody mentioned that we're doing, uh, the city is doing a master plan at the Holkenbridge Alpharetta, um, intersection. The Sizmore Group is the group that's been hired to do that. Um, and so the plan is for them and the DDA to come speak at our next breakfast, um, which will be second Wednesday of...
Uh, next month.
Yep. Whatever that is, second Wednesday, November, a variant.
November 9.
November 9.
7:30.
7:30 in the morning, we give you breakfast and coffee. Is that variant?
Exactly where I'm at.
I know. We're a very nice group.
Will there be coffee?
Yeah, I know, right? Yeah. We, yeah, we, we can't serve beer, but we do serve coffee and breakfast. So just file that away as well. All right. So one last fun question and one last serious question. Um, does everybody have siblings or is anybody an only child?
Siblings.
Siblings? Okay, because it doesn't work if you don't. So the question is, how would your siblings describe you? I never ask how your spouse describes you because people get all like, oh, they would say, just, you know.
You haven't met my husband.
Yeah, that's true. So how would your siblings describe you? And again, you don't need all two minutes, just...
Um, how would my sibling describe me? I will preface this with, I am the oldest and I'm the oldest by seven years and I have a younger brother and you could not create two individuals who are more polar opposites than my brother and myself. Um, so he would probably describe me as incredibly type A, um, like most firstborns are, um, and very anal retentive, um, overly organized. I'm literally just taking words that would describe him and making him opposite. No, take it, my brother, I love my brother. Um, and very outgoing and bossy.
All right.
Being honest.
I'm gonna try to do something real quick. I'm gonna call my sister. She has no idea this question's coming, but let's see. Let's see if she answers.
What are you doing?
I know, I got two minutes.
Are you the oldest?
I just have one younger sister.
Okay, so you're the oldest.
Um, we're about three years younger than me.
Okay.
All right. It looks like she's not gonna answer, so.
Is that a statement?
Yeah, I guess that, that could be a bad thing, so.
She's probably a weak check.
My brother would.
Probably a bad idea to call her, but, um, no, I think she would describe me as, uh, uh, somebody who's passionate, somebody who cares a lot and somebody who, um, tries to make the world a better place.
Your sister's nicer than my brother.
So I'm the youngest of three. My older sister would clearly describe me as the pesky little brother. There's no question about that. My middle sister, uh, the one closest to me, I just wrote her a birthday poem two days ago. I called her Lisa Lou Who and, uh, Lisa Lou Who is, uh, the last person to break my nose. Okay? So, uh...
By purpose or by accident?
Oh yeah, she was standing behind the door with her hands like that. Whack! I had it coming, believe me. I definitely had it coming. But, uh, but you know, the, the thing that I just absolutely love, every time we're together, she is always just in stitches. She, she laughs at everything I say. It's the funniest thing. I can always make my sister laugh, I don't know why, more than anybody else. And we had this cool opportunity, um, just last year, my father died on Father's Day and I happened, I was with him and I had my hand on his heart when he died and the week before, my sister had been there. And, um, she, she filmed while we got to sit there and just ask him questions about his life and that was really, really cool. We're very, very close.
Well, lucky for me, my sister's actually here, but I won't call her up here or call her out. Because she would kill me. Um, we're 12 years apart, uh, I came from a split home, so we, we are dad, um, we, our dad, uh, we got to spend a lot of time together growing up, uh, as she was a baby. We're 12 years apart, so, um, uh, I think she would describe me as witty, I hope. Um, and certainly driven and energetic, almost like the Energizer Bunny. It's really just non-stop and I like to, uh, I like to engage and go, go do good things.
I love it.
My sister's phone, can I ask her real quick?
Come on, do it, yeah.
Hey, Rania.
Hey, what's up?
What are you doing?
I'm at a party, what's going on?
Uh, I have a quick question for you. You're on, uh, speaker phone, or speaker right now and there's maybe 50 people near me, but how would you describe me as a brother?
Oh my goodness, this is what you want me to talk about right now?
Yeah, just real quick, three words.
Real quick, um, loyal, affectionate and kind.
Thank you, I'll send you the check. Bye.
We call my brother with no appropriate answer.
I love that. That's the best. We gotta incorporate that into next year's debates and, uh, I love it. Yeah, that was awesome. Thank you for that. Yeah, yeah. Um, all right. Last serious, last question, last serious question, last question, and then you'll have an opportunity to wrap up as well. So know that this is not your last opportunity to speak, just the last question. So, um, where do you see Roswell? Where would you like to see Roswell in 10 years? 20's too far, let's do 10, okay?
I just answered first. Or if I go in.
That's a very good question. Where would I like to see Roswell 10 years from now? Um, we have a lot of charm, we have a lot of character in this city. I'd love to see us maintaining that character, maintaining that charm, maintaining everything that makes Roswell such a special city, but at the same time, I, I don't want to see us left behind what's happening in neighboring cities. Um, just building a strong business community here is so critical. So I'd love to see us, uh, develop the city, um, while we maintain the charm, uh, but not allowing us to be left behind. And that could be through mixed use facilities, um, just, you know, investing in our parks, investing in our police, investing, um, uh, just in businesses. Focus on making quality of life, uh, a key driver of everything that we do.
It's funny, that's almost the exact amount of time I was at Turner Broadcasting and there's just, you know, growth is fun. It, it creates opportunity. Um, you know, the opposite of growth is not stagnation, it's death, you know? I mean, you're either growing or intreating. So I, I would love to see Roswell continue to grow. Personally, I would, I would love this to be a place where people want to come and raise their kids, that this is a, this is a destination. You know, Atlanta, I think it was this week I saw on the Wall Street Journal, Atlanta's the number one destination for people moving to. Uh, and, you know, that, so there, there's a lot of people coming to Atlanta and there's a reason for that and Roswell is one of the crown jewels of that. Uh, I do believe that if we, if we filter, uh, flit, flit away these last, these next few years, we're gonna fall farther and farther behind. So I do think we need to get into balance. I really do. It's, it, we have, I believe I heard it's like 25 square miles of our 42 square miles is single family dwellings. It's, it's a big, big percentage of our, 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 uh, city. And these neighborhoods are, are precious, man. You know, they're, they're, they're great places for, that we raised our kids and I'd like to see my kids be able to raise their kids here as well. And those, those are the things that I'd like to see and to do that, we need to bring the tax base up so that it's not resting on that and so that we can continue to be a vibrant city and invest in ourselves. That's what I would like to see over the next 10 years.
10 years, that's just, is right around the corner. Um, I tell you, we spent a lot of money as a city on a, on a slogan a few years ago that we've since done away with and, and I think that epitomizes where we are, where we need to be, is really modern spirit, southern soul. That maintains our charm and maintains our, uh, our, our great small town feel while at the same time, uh, redeveloping some areas that we can, uh, become a magnet for other industries, other, other companies to relocate here. Uh, we can be a magnet to draw new families in because again, once you get here and you live here for even just a small amount of time, you're gonna fall in love with it. And we can ensure that that continues to happen by smart managed growth. Growth's inevitable. If we, Alan hit the point, uh, if we don't, if we're not growing, we're, we're stagnant in my opinion and, and we don't like stagnation, uh, and that leads to decline. So I think, um, uh, modern spirit, southern soul, I think says it all because I believe that that is what we are, that encompasses our, who we are as a city.
Uh, in planning, if you're planning for today, you're already behind the eight ball for tomorrow. So I believe in a Roswell that's more forward thinking 10 years from now. I believe in a Roswell that is diverse and I mean that again, not only culturally and ethnically and racially, but also socioeconomically. Um, I, I have an environmental background and when you're assessing an environment, biodiversity is the first indicator of the health of an environment. And when you're doing city planning, it's very similar. When you lack socioeconomic diversity or cultural diversity, that's an indicator that you have an unhealthy city or an unhealthy environment. So I'd like to see a Roswell that is, uh, continuing to grow in its diversity, to be an inclusive community, to avoid displacement of our generational residents. And that's true to be family friendly in the truest sense. Family friendly community is one that can house its residents who are, whether they're five minutes old, they're 50 years old or they're above, um, in every single phase of their life. Uh, I believe in a Roswell that can be protective of its historic assets and its historic charm, uh, its environmental assets and its green space, but also be mindful of its land use and be able to be resilient. And again, I mean that resiliency, not only economically, but environmentally, because that's what we're going to need in order to survive. I believe in a competitive Roswell to where we can not only provide, uh, the resources that our residents need, but the resources that our businesses need to thrive as well. And I think that we can do that with more forward thinking, more future planning and action. Thank you.
All right. All right. We are gonna let everybody get two minutes to wrap up and then, um, and then we'll, we'll close the shindig down, but thank you so much. All right, let's start with Jason.
I think it was Alan. It was Alan.
Or Alan?
Yeah, Alan was next.
Yeah, Alan, apologies.
Watch out, flip it. You got it? There you go.
There goes the neighborhood. Listen, thank, thank you guys, thank, for hosting this. Thank you for Roswell Moms Network and for Roswell Next for hosting this. It's, this is a great way to do this.
That looked really serious.
Yeah, you know, doing this in a furniture store, what, what a nice touch, huh? Yeah, that was great. Everybody gets to be comfortable. Um, I appreciate everybody being here, um, and you know, the, the thing I'm focused on, like a laser beam, is fixing the tax imbalance. That is my top priority, that's why I'm running. And I, I really appreciate the time and effort that, that people have put into supporting And I really appreciate the time and effort that people have put into supporting my campaign and supporting these campaigns. This is the stuff of small-town America, it is a wonderful thing that we're doing here. I am glad to be a part of it, and I appreciate the fact that, you know, you go knock on somebody's door, and they say, "Thank you for stopping by." That is, there's nothing more rewarding than that for me, I've enjoyed the heck out of that. And I would like to say that, you know, you can find out more about me at allenforroswell.com, that's pretty unique and ingenious, don't y'all think? But listen, it has been a great pleasure to be a part of this process, and I look forward to seeing the outcome on November 8th with each of you. And vote for Alan.
In closing, I tell you, running a campaign, that has been one of the most tremendous times of my life. I've gotten to meet some amazing people, been to some amazing places, and got to do some amazing things, and learn a lot along the way. I think that what we really got to look at is really, if you consider it, what we're all running for is your city council position, and if you really think about it, local politics, that is the most important thing that impacts you directly. I know we get caught up in federal elections, and we get caught up in state elections, and those are important as well, but for your day-to-day life, the decisions that your city council will make on your behalf are going to impact you, hands down, way more than any other election, from property taxes, to public safety, to housing, it all affects us directly. I will say, one of the things that I love to do, I pay attention to details, there's so many small things that we can change or fix in our city, and I promise you, if we take care of the details, the bigger picture will paint itself on its own, and there's just a lot we have to pay mind to. Again, Jason, my website is jasonforroswell, I actually spell out the word "for," so Jason F O R Roswell, rather unique, too. And the last thing I'll say in closing, please, I respectfully and honorably ask for your vote, on, early voting starts again Monday, so please, consider me for your next city council member, and go vote on November 8th. Keep in mind, bonds are on the ballot. Please go home, tell five of your friends to go vote, because the bonds are very important to our future. And last, to close out, jasonforroswell.com, but most importantly, go Braves.
I just want to go ahead and acknowledge our hosts and sponsors for this evening. I sit here and I think about how much the hosts are reflective of the Roswell community. You have Roswell Next, which is reflective of our business community, and those who really represent where Roswell's going. You also have Roswell Moms Network, which is a reflection of how family-friendly Roswell is, and how it's a wonderful place to be able to raise children, and I'm incredibly privileged to be able to partake in that currently. And then we're being hosted right here in sunny and rainy, which is not only a local business, but it's a business that gets back, and it's a business that improves its community and takes care of its neighbors. And I think this is also an incredible reflection of the culture that Roswell has. Again, my name is Sarah Beeson, candidate for Roswell City Council, the only candidate with city planning experience, the only candidate with environmental management experience, and I'd like to be able to bring that diversity of thought to complement with an E, our Roswell City Council, and those who currently serve in our leadership positions, because I'd like to bring diversity of thought not only to council itself, to make sure that we're reflecting that community, right? The reflection that we see in this room tonight with incredibly different folks, and vendors, and organizations, I'd like to be able to hear some more of those voices in our council chambers, and have those reflected in our policy decisions. I'd like to make sure that we're having more future planning and forward-thinking, and making sure that Roswell's notorious for what I call circling the plane around the airport, and I'd like to see us land the plane on some decisions that have a positive impact on our future. Because I grew up here in Roswell, my kids are growing up here in Roswell, and I'd like for the generational, the generational tradition to continue, where I can have grandkids that grow up here as well, and I think many in this room would probably agree with that. So if you do agree with that, I respectfully ask for your vote, starting on Monday for early voting, November 8th for the election. When you go to vote for governor or senator, bring it on down to the very bottom of your ballot, because as the others said, this is one of the most important races that you're going to vote on, because each and every one of the decisions your council members make impact your daily life in a way that's far more tangible than the more removed offices. And these are the folks that you see at the grocery stores or a restaurant out about town. So with that, check out votebesson.com, that's vot-b-d-l-e-s-o-n.com. My name is Sarah Beeson, and I respectfully ask for your vote. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We're about 25 days away from November 8th, and when I started this process two to three months ago, I was told, Mulham, if you want to have a successful campaign, you need to raise between $40,000 to $70,000 to win. I thought that was crazy, because a city council member makes $18,000. I'm happy to say, I threw yesterday, or today, I've raised $10,200, and I share that with you, because it's something I'm proud of. I've intentionally not tried to raise a lot of money. I think you can take, over $1,000, you're allowed to take, I'm not sure exactly the amount, but I've intentionally not taken more than $200 from anyone, nobody. And I wanted to see if you could win an election without big money, for a relatively small city like Roswell. And so far, I feel I'm an underdog, but I feel I'm working hard, and I'm trying my best to connect with residents on ideas. If you're looking for a candidate that's going to be a city council member, that works 40 to 50 hours a week on city council, I'm not that person, I can't be that person. I respect city council members who are doing that. I've met pretty much all the city councils, and they tell me, they say, "Mulham, we're putting in 40 hours a week, 50 hours a week, 60 hours a week, 70 hours a week as a council member." I think it's great. I can't do that, I'm not that person, but I'm a CFO of a company that has multiples of revenue of the City of Roswell budget. I feel I'd add a lot of value, I feel I'd be a good voice for the residents, and I also ask for your vote. My website's not as fancy, I don't have my name in it, probably because a lot of people can't pronounce it, so I went with yes2roswell.com. I encourage y'all to visit it, and I encourage y'all, most importantly, like everyone said here, to vote. Thank you so much, it's been a great evening, and God bless everyone.
Yes, thank you, yeah. Give these guys all a round of applause. I want to say thank you, all, each of you, sincerely. It was awesome, and I'm really, really proud of what we put on here tonight, and what we were able to bring. If you are a Roswell Next board member, please raise your hand. I've got people standing in the quarters over here, you can't see, they're back there, they're all over the place. We are doing, we could not do anything that we do, and bring the amazing content that we do, and word has spread, we are growing, and we're really excited about that. So thank you to sunny and rainy, thank you to the Roswell Moms Network, that was a huge, that was a big thing, too, and connecting with them, and a lot of the local moms in the area. And again, sunny and rainy donating the space and providing this for us, and again, to each of you. So with that, we're going to end, and thank you all for coming, really appreciate you all as neighbors and Roswellians, so thanks a lot, and have a good evening.